Good evening and welcome to the public meeting of the Halton District School Board for Wednesday, June 6, 2018. I'd like to welcome everyone and remind everyone that this meeting is video voice recorded and live streamed from the hdsb.ca website. I would also like to ask that you turn any devices to silent mode. So we have a couple of trustees, actually four trustees that are missing this evening. We have the two student trustees, trustee Mansour and trustee Metropolitansky that are away for student reasons, you know, it's busy this time of year for them. And we also are, have regrets from trustee Harvey Hope and trustee Graves as well. Superintendent Padra Barak is also not with us this evening. So before we move forward, this evening, we have trustee Oliver to honor the land.
Good evening. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern tradition. Sony and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions, land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the New Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you very much, trustee Oliver. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none. Before I put the agenda on the table, I need to make an adjustment. We will not be having the OPSA award presentation this evening. It will be happening at some point in the future, hopefully the next board meeting. Okay, so could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you, trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none? All those in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, now we're up to the Inspire Awards, one of my favorite things that happens every month. Everyone in the Halton District School Board community can nominate or be nominated, families, neighbors, related organizations, staff, students, and school volunteers. The Inspire Award is given to an individual or group that is formally or informally associated with the Halton District School Board who support our students and their achievements through exemplary caring initiative, innovation, and creativity. Award recipients choose where they would like to receive their award, and this evening we have three presentations. So first I'll call up trustee Kelly Amos, who will be presenting the first award. And then I'd like to invite Jackie Clark up to the front. Jackie is a teacher with Oudnawee Public School. She creates a welcoming and inclusive classroom environment for students, parents, and other staff members. Jackie understands the varying needs of the different learners in her classroom and is always applying a hands-on approach for students. She ensures lessons are fun and engaging for all students and always has a positive attitude and approach to learning. Jackie is a wonderful role model and inspiration for all students and staff. Congratulations. Trustee Amos will be staying because we, our next Inspire Award will also be presented by her. Would Teresa Baxter please come forward? Teresa is a teacher at Oudnawee Public School. As a teacher of life skills classes at the school, Teresa makes it a commitment to ensure every student receives the time and attention they need to succeed. In a class of students with varying levels of learning needs, Teresa provides all students with the resources they require to develop independence. Through highly structured and step-by-step programs, Teresa has helped her students become more comfortable with daily activities and with communicating. Teresa's enthusiasm, organization, and patience is an inspiration to her students and EA team. Congratulations. Last but not least for the evening, I'd like to call up trustee Rochelle Pappen. And I'd like to call up Cory Trode, please. Cory is a resource teacher at Lester B. Pearson High School. He is an outstanding support for all students and works closely with special education needs students, ensuring their transition from elementary to secondary school is smooth. He believes in, advocates for, and encourages his students and includes parents in their students' learning. Cory is always positive and has his students' best interests at heart. His caring and supportive approach helps students build confidence to reach their goals. Congratulations. of work. Peter Milovanovic, principal at John William Voich. Rod Wait, oh sorry, wait. Yes, Rod Wait, a teacher at Nunn District High School. Rod Aferro, a volunteer with Silver Creek Public School and Georgetown District High Ruth Ann Courage, volunteer with West Oak. And that's everybody for this month. So congratulations to them all until the next meeting. Because we will be having everybody from May at the next meeting. Excellent, thank you very much. So moving on, we have no delegations this evening, but we do have one presentation. Number 323, Truth and Reconciliation Annual Report. Superintendent Etoff. And then we have... And Principal Marshall and IPL Tammy Hardwick. Welcome. Oh, and just to note that this presentation is the sister presentation to the report that is on page 149.
Through the chair, yes, I would like to acknowledge that system principal Marshall is in the audience and certainly will acknowledge her support of this work following the presentation. But as you can see from the report in front of you, extensive work continues to take place throughout the system to ensure that we honor the motions of the board of the trustees, which are based upon the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's calls to action. Over the past 12 months, this work has been illustrative of the high degree of commitment to the implementation of learning based upon the calls to action across all levels of the Halton District School Board. Over the summer months, we'll be revising the HDSB equity policy to update language and include the central tenets of what the trustees approved through their original motion back on June, in June 2015. The commitment of the Halton District School Board's response to the work of the National Truth and Reconciliation Commission regarding Indian residential schools in Canada will be integrated into our equity policy statement and thereby continue to be framed as integral to the equity work undertaken across our board. At this time, I'd like to introduce Tammy Hardwick, instructional program leader, K-12 for First Nation, Métis, and Inuit education, so that she can share some highlights of the work that's been accomplished over the past 12 months.
Thank you, Superintendent Etoff. Ani Bojou, Tammy Hardwick, dish na khas, adaw, anoshanabe, shishagwaning, mino domine sing, makododem. So once again, thank you for having me here. The past 12 months has seen a wide variety of learning opportunities as our communities engage deeply in learning that reflects Truth and Reconciliation Commission calls to action. I would like to highlight three areas of work in particular that speak to the high level of investment across Halton District School Board. First, a considerable focus for staff learning this year was the release of Phase 1 of the Ministry of Education Curriculum Enhancements, grades 4 to 6, Social Studies, grade 7 and 8 History, and grade 10 Canadian History. These curriculum enhancements were developed in order to redress the legacy of residential schools and advance the process of reconciliation in Canada. Over the past year, representative educators from Halton Elementary and Secondary Schools participated in professional development focused on deepening their knowledge of indigenous perspectives, cultures, histories, and contemporary realities in order to more effectively implement the curriculum enhancements beginning in September 2018. Phase 2 and 3 of the curriculum enhancements will include social studies and history curriculum for grades 1 to 3, as well as secondary social sciences, humanities, and Canada and world studies courses. These ongoing enhancements will explicitly embed the requirements of the calls to action and reflect indigenous histories and perspectives. A second area of focus I'd like to highlight from this year was the Indigenous Arts Collaborative Inquiry Series. This professional development was designed and implemented in partnership with the Indigenous education leads from Duffin Peel District School Board, Duffin Catholic, sorry, Halton Catholic District School Board, exploring areas such as cultural appropriation. Secondary visual arts educators for the course Expressing First Nations, Métis, and Inuit Cultures, grade 9, worked closely with indigenous artists over the year-long inquiry to examine and inform their classroom programs. Secondary arts teachers were also invited to learn from the artists and educator learning through a symposium and culminating their day of sharing. Finally, as a community partner, Halton District School Board continues to work with local organizations to build understanding and awareness of indigenous histories and perspectives. As an example, collaborating with the Oakville Community Foundation through the TRC partnership, learning opportunities were provided for students and community members. These opportunities have included the Vital Conversation Series for community members with topics including Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls and Treaty Recognition Week. The final community event will be the screening and panel discussion of the film Indian Horse on June 21, National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Additionally, grade 5 students in Oakville were able to increase their knowledge of the richness of indigenous culture and heritage in the community through the Indigenous Guided Walking Tour on the Moccasin Trails. As Justice Murray Sinclair has stated, achieving reconciliation is like climbing a mountain. We must proceed a step at a time. It will not always be easy, there will be storms, there will be obstacles, but we cannot allow ourselves to be daunted by the task because our goal is just and it is also necessary. It is clear that the momentum of the mountain and the desire to respond to the calls to action has continued this year across all levels of Halton District School Board. Migwich for the opportunity to share these highlights of the report with you tonight.
And just as a wrap-up in closing, I would like to take this opportunity because in past years, unfortunately, I haven't, I've been able to have Tammy here at the table with us. So certainly wanted to take this opportunity to thank her for her leadership in this, in this critical work across the system and also acknowledge our stage fright principal, assistant principal, Mary Marshall, for her, for her leadership as well. We're fortunate to have many partners in this work and appreciate the support we've received from all levels of the organization, of course, starting with our, our board of trustees. And at this point, we'd be happy to receive any questions that you may have.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I'd just like to say Migwich to both of you and to everyone else involved. I believe that our board is a leader in this and that it is being embraced through the whole system and including this at our board. And we are all learning together, and I think it is so important. I have been to many schools and been involved in some of their activities, and I just think that this is part of the learning that we should all be doing because this is all about what Canada is all about, and we need to make sure that all students know about all facets of Canada, not just the ones they thought we should know. So I'm learning, and I think it's important, important that we, everyone learn, and so I'd just like to say Migwich for all the hard work that you and everyone else who's involved is doing it.
Thank you, Migwich. Trustee Gray.
Thank you, through the chair to Tammy. Thank you very much for your report tonight and also to Superintendent Etoff for the fulsome report that we received in our package. I wonder, Tammy, the report that you've shared with us tonight, would you be able to share it electronically with us? Because I think it's a very nice summary, very fulsomely, of all of the activities that have happened to date and, and still very inspiring. So we really appreciate having a copy of that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, through the chair to Superintendent Etoff, Ms. Hardwick, and Principal Marshall. I just wanted to thank you for all your work you've done on this. I think it's great that there's so much involvement from the school community. I do have one question, though. I, I know we are trying to read the acknowledgement at all of our board meetings, and I've been to some events where it has been read, but I noticed in some events it's not being read. So I'm not sure how we can go about getting that done, but I think that would be a good idea for, for people that are attending different events by the Halton District School Board. My other comment and question is regarding the calls to action. And I was wondering, I know that in your report, the calls to action are related to education, but since the board has done such a great job of having the honoring the land as part of our ceremony, our, our board meeting, I think it would be nice if we acknowledged one call to action each meeting or once a month. I think that would be a good way of getting it out there as well, letting people know what the calls to action are. You know, because not everybody knows them or is as aware of what they are, what they actually entail. So I don't know if that's something we can consider, but thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Trust, sorry, Vice Chair Al Harrison. Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my deep gratitude for the work that, to pull together the report, but all of the people that have been involved and just the breadth and depth of the work that's taking place across our system. I didn't imagine when that motion came forward, it's a couple of years ago now, how the implementation would work. And I feel like it's truly one of the best things that I've been involved in, and I want to thank you for that. I think one of the last sections in the report talk about flags, and I just wondered if you would be able to let us know where that's at. And for people who weren't at the committee of the whole meeting, that was certainly when we were in discussions and Knowledge Keeper Paquette, that was one of the requests that he had made, that the system give consideration to the flags. So I just wondered about that.
I can, I can speak to that piece, and Tammy can, can fill in for any parts that I, that I'm missing. As an update, we actually had, had a request earlier this year and brought a report around flags and continued to do work around those pieces in cooperation with our, with our many different partners. Where we're, I guess where we're at in terms of current state is we have ordered flags of the Mississaugas of the New Credit for each one of our school sites, and they're coming hopefully any day now, hopefully in time for June 21st. One of our challenges is unlike the pride flag or some other flags where it is our belief that we can fly both on the same flagpole, the one piece that we are aware of is that you cannot fly the flags of sovereign nations on the same pole. And Mississaugas of the New Credit are a sovereign nation, so, so that, so we won't see on June 21st the flags flying at our school sites. We'll see it flying here at the board office where we have, have the two poles. Our direction to schools is to have it up in, in places if they happen to have interior flagpoles, like some schools do, I know Hayden does, for example. For those that don't, to, it to be placed in, in a spot of significance within the school in some manner of form. And in terms of going forward, we'd like to certainly see that that isn't just something that's done on June 21st, but that is something that has a place of significance in our schools all, all year round.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. I, I am so proud of the work that has happened over the past year, and I, though I know that there's a lot that we still, of course, need to do, I think the community outreach and working with our community partners is also incredibly important, and I thank you so much for all you do. So we are now up to our consent agenda items. Do any consented items, consent agenda items require discussion at all? Seeing anything? Okay. Given, okay. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor. So, oh, yes, trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. I have a question about one of the order papers.
So I'll put the motion on the floor and then we'll discuss it, okay? Okay, great, thank you. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda action items and receive the information items for June 6, 2018 are moved by trustee Daniele? That's, it did by trustee Collard. Okay, and you can go ahead with your question.
Thank you. I'd like to get an update on motion M150071 that deals with the HTST conducting a study around bell time. Changes in bell time. That's page eight in our package.
Superintendent Verman.
Thank you, through the chair. I was able to contact Karen LaQua and to get an update with respect to this motion. So she has indicated that the bell time review is going to span a number of years. Last year, Oakville was reviewed. This year, there's a review of Halton Hills. Next year will be Milton, and lastly Burlington, once the par changes are fully implemented. And as a result of the work, as an example of what was done last year in Oakville, there was a reduction or the number of routes were reduced, were eight large buses, too many buses, and one wheelchair accessible vehicle. So the work is ongoing, and based on discussion at the board director's meeting, she indicated that the most efficient way is to do it area by area.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I was part of those discussions, and I believe Oakville was only a partial study, and they actually need to go back to Oakville to do another review because it was only one area. So I'm hoping that it doesn't stop after the par because I had requested that Oakville be sooner than later, so.
Okay, seeing no one else on the speakers list. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, we are now up to our ratification action items. Vice Chair Al Harrison, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one motion that I'm going to call up here. And I'm going to read this motion in its entirety, I understand. Here we go. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board accept the tender from Starfleet Construction in the amount of $900,144 as contained in tender number RFT 18-70 for the construction and renovation of a childcare and capital renewal improvements at Brant Hills Public School in Burlington, Ontario, subject to final ministry confirmation of the funding. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve a budget of $1,091,381 including HST for the construction of a childcare and capital renewal improvements at Brant Hills Public School. This project is to be financed as follows. Schools first, childcare capital retrofit funding of $771,381 as allocated by the ministry in December 2017 pending final approval to proceed. Renewal funding of $20,000 and school condition improvement funding of $300,000 and ISO move.
And I would like to second that motion if that's possible. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none? All in favor? That passes unanimously, thank you very much. That passes unanimously, thank you very much. So we have three action items for this evening. The first is number 2.1 Audit Committee. Superintendent Vermin, report 18082 on page 29 of your package. And I'm going to read the recommendation, oh, sorry. Sorry, Jean. Uh, I'll, I'll read it first and then, okay. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the audit plan attached as appendix A for the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2018, prepared by the board's external auditors Deloitte LLP. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the 2018-2019 Regional Internal Audit Plan, which includes audits of special education, scope to be determined, and continuing education, and follow-up reviews of the entity level assessment, information technology, backup disaster recovery, and information technology vulnerability and security assessment be approved by the Board of Trustees. Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Daniele. Like to speak to this trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. Well, as you've said, uh, Chair, these are the recommendations from the Audit Committee. The first one being uh, from the external auditors Deloitte, and the second one being from the regional internal audit team. And uh, I think that uh, the Audit Committee was very, very pleased with the um, with the reports as delivered by both of these groups and uh, wished to recommend uh, them to the Board of Trustees. I would note that in the RIAT, there was a change that happened in the Audit Committee where we uh, decided to take the audit of enrollment uh, and, and, and step it aside to have rather an audit of special education. Reason for that being that the special education audit had been deferred from um, uh, I, I think of the previous year due to the special education uh, review that was underway. And so uh, overall, uh, again, I would um, strongly support this uh, this report as it comes to you from the Audit Committee and uh, with the blessings of everyone on that Audit Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, we have two speakers on the list, trustee Collard.
Thank you, I would like to repeat my concern regarding um, the special education audit because the scope has not yet been determined. I would like uh, SEAC to be informed of the scope when it is determined, and I would like it to be brought to the board so that we may uh, have the opportunity to comment on it and perhaps tweak it if required, um, so that we can ensure the privacy of our students throughout the process. Thank you.
Thank you, there's no more speakers on the list. So we will move to voting. All those in favor. That passes unanimously, but I understand Director Miller would like to say something.
Yeah, I should have thought of this at the time, I'm wondering, we've, we've recorded um, trustee Collard's uh, comments in the, in the notes, and we have every intention of, of following those. But I'm wondering if it should have been a motion. I think it probably should have been.
Let's make it a motion.
Sure.
Okay, do we have, uh, so just, can you just clarify exactly what you, your motion would like to be?
That the scope of the special education audit be um, brought to SEAC for their information and presented to the Board of Trustees for decision, um, when it, when the scope has been determined.
Do we have a secondor for that, trustee Reynolds? And is uh, let me see, is there any further discussion on that? Trustee Al Harrison.
Yes, thank you, I just want to ask trustee Collard, um, your intention for SEAC? Is it, you said for information, or do you mean for? Input or?
Well, SEAC can always advise, but they can't change the scope, they can advise on it. So it would be presented for their information and, and they can give feedback. But um, it's the Board of Trustees that would determine whether or not the scope was suitable.
Through you Chair Grabens to Vice Chair Al Harrison. Uh, I am pretty sure the intent was to take it to SEAC anyway. I think this is better, formalizes it. Um, I think we talked about that earlier as well, uh, with Superintendent Zahnfeld and with the RIAT auditor, so.
Okay, so seeing no more speakers. Sure. Okay, so the motion is be it resolved that the Halton District School Board direct the scope of the special educational internal all, audit be presented to SEAC for information and returned to the board for approval. All in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, next on the list, uh, we have number uh, 422 Aldershot Capital Renewal Work. Associate Director Boge, report 18085 on page 49 of your package. And I will read that recommendation to put it on the floor. Be resolved that the board approve $1,475,000 from 2018 to 2019 capital renewal funds to update facilities at Aldershot High School to deliver the ISTEM regional program. Moved by trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Pappin. Is there any discussion at all on this? Actually, why don't you start, David?
Thanks, Madam Chair, just a reminder for trustees that the ISTEM program is to start a year from this September. And so this request, although it's not for additional funds, these are funds that come out of our um, capital renewal dollars that we get, it's for prioritization and allocation of these funds so that we can get to work on um, ensuring the building is up and running for September 2019. So I, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and there were lots of different folks involved or who are involved in this project that I'll probably farm the questions out if they're too hard for me.
Okay, trustee Gray.
Thank you through the chair, just a quick question under the facility upgrades. I see in number one, there's air conditioning for manufacturing and the hub. Um, just a quick question, uh, can, from a uh, consistency point of view, is there air conditioning in manufacturing areas of all secondary schools? Or is this something different?
Uh, thanks for that question, trustee Gray. I'm going to look to Superintendent Blackwell around the hub concept, I think that's the critical piece here. Manufacturing shops, it would be hit and miss, and, and many, there would not be air conditioning.
Uh, through, through the chair to super, or to trustee Gray. Um, actually at Nelson, the addition that's going on to Nelson, the manufacturing uh, area will have air conditioning. Uh, existing spaces that are manufacturing spaces already are not air conditioned. So it is as, as Superintendent Boge, or, I've been doing well today. As Associate Director Boge uh, mentioned, it's hit and miss. Uh, the hub space is something that's not in any of our schools, it's something that we are creating. And, and if you recall from a few weeks ago, uh, we did talk about opportunities to have uh, communities come into that space as well, and we want to make sure that uh, uh, the space is there that, that's open and inviting and, and workable for whatever we put in there at this time.
Okay, well, there are no other speakers on the list. So we will. All those in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, so next is number 423 Fair Funding Awareness. Report 18087 on page 50 of the board package. I'll read the recommendation in, and then I'm sure uh, trustee Amos will want to speak to it. Okay, so be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the action plan outlined below to share the information for the Fair Funding for Students campaign. Moved by trustee Amos, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Uh, and is there any, you, you can speak to it.
Thank you. Um, this has been a journey, and I would like to thank everyone who involved to um, get this infographic here. Summer, I sent you the infographic, I was wondering if you could put it on the display. Um, I'd like to thank trustee Reynolds, trustee Oliver, uh, trustee Gray, trustee Pappin, trustee Al Harrison, and trustee Grabens. Um, they were the key group that um, worked together as well. I'd like to thank for all their assistance, uh, Director Miller, Superintendent um, Vermin, and uh, Marnie Denton for their guidance in helping us massage this into something that hopefully will um, help inform the community. Um, this was brought to the board because we felt that um, people did not understand how school boards were funded. And when we started to explore it, we found it was a lot more difficult to explain than we initially thought. So that, that's why it took longer than we actually thought. And some of the things um, that we were trying to highlight were some of it, like the deficit that we have in special education. The fact that um, over the last four years, we've lost $2 million per year on our funding for SpecEd. And uh, some of the other areas were the fact that we're one of the only growing school boards in the region. And um, the problem is not that, that we are the lowest funded board. The problem is the funding formula and how it is done. Someone has to be the lowest, and we don't mind if we're the lowest. But it's the distance from midpoint to where we are that is the problem. And so what we're hoping that the community will have a look at this and will reach out to us and ask questions. And then that hopefully they will then advocate on our behalf to the Ministry of Education about trying to get the funding formula um, adjusted. So maybe it's a fairer um, way of funding for all school boards.
Thank you, are there any questions at all about? This motion? Trustee Gray.
Thank you through the chair. Um, I look forward to the continuing work of this committee next fall as um, this document is shared around our communities, but also as we begin to engage with the government officials of the day uh, to seek some traction on some of the things that we already planted um, within our current government and some of the representatives that we met with. I think um, also that we have a plan, um, and it's been, uh, or at least an initial discussion, to begin to share this with our, uh, the mayors of our four regions, to begin to engage them as being part of this discussion and part of the uh, promotion of the, the concept of, I guess, a better understanding of and better action towards fairer funding. So I think we've got a, a great start, we've got lots more to do. But I think this document that's been created will be a, a tremendous assist as we take what is, as you've said, trustee Amos, a very complex issue, and as we try to simplify it and diagrammatically show through this document uh, exactly where the Halton District School Board stands uh, in relation to funding in this province. So thank you, thank you for your leadership in directing this committee. And I look forward to uh, continuing my involvement with this committee in the fall.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you, thank you Summer for getting it displayed for us. I just wanted to also mention that um, all trustees will be receiving the um, flyer by email so that they can share it with whomever they feel appropriate. And that um, this document will be um, shown on the slider on the main page of the, uh, with a link to the Board of Trustees page, and the item will appear on the left side of the um, navigation board as well. Um, each trustee is received a number of hard copies so they can share it with their communities. And um, we're going to be issuing a media release um, probably early next week about this document.
Trustee Pappin.
Thank you through the chair to uh, trustee Amos. I just wanted to thank you for all your initiative on this, this committee and all the work you've done on this committee. Um, and I think the key is uh, raising awareness. I know that um, for a lot of us, it was our, hard for us to get our head around exactly what it was about, what we needed to do. Uh, but I also wanted to share with you that I was at the um, provincial candidates debate at uh, Burlington Central High School. And there was a question about fair funding uh, put out to the candidates. And only one of the three got the, the main idea of what it meant and, and what we had to do. So it just shows you, it's, it's not really understood by a lot of people, so, thank you for that.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you, I'm really excited to share this work with the, our respective communities. Uh, and I'm also as interested, excited, and curious to hear what the feedback will be. So my question is just in that regard, and, and it just struck me now, or I would have raised it earlier. Whether in terms of our action plan, one piece that we might consider is just creating a shared space where we can input the feedback that we hear, so we can consider that as we kind of move forward to next steps. Could just be a Google Doc or something.
I have no problem with that, and actually it's a great idea, so I'll create a document that we can capture any feedback that we receive.
Okay, great, and uh, a friendly just amendment that uh, Gil, Gil suggested, uh, I'll read the, the motion again, it'll, it'll make sense why uh, this is suggested. Be resolved, oh, sorry, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the action plan outlined in report 18087 to share the information for the Fair Funding for Students campaign. So if that's okay, okay, excellent. So uh, there's no more speakers on the list. I wanted to say though, that uh, I am so happy that we've gotten to this point. I think the team worked really well together and was supported uh, technologically and other ways um, by um, the board, because we can't, can't do it all. We have, um, sometimes we have to lean a bit, but uh, certainly I am excited to get this out there. So um, on we vote. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations. And uh, thank you very much. Okay, so next up is communications to the board. And um, unfortunately, we don't have our student trustees with us this evening, but but Dash has sent me uh, a report. I don't speak as fast as her, so um, this uh, will take a little bit. Okay, uh, she asked me specifically to read it out, so I, I promised I would. Okay, on Tuesday, May 20th, we had our final student trustee meeting of the year. Although most of the meeting was dedicated to planning the youth, Halton Youth Leadership Symposium, we had Associate Director Boge come in and collect feedback from the student senators about their family's decision-making process and around choosing a high school. We hope this feedback will help inform the, inform the board's efforts to attract more students to the HDSP secondary schools. On Thursday, May 31st, the HDSP Student Senate On Thursday, May 31st, the HDSB Student Senate ran the 17th Annual Halton Youth Leadership Symposium at Sheridan College. We had over 200 grade seven and eight participants from 33 elementary schools in Halton with representation from all areas of the board, Milton, Oakville, Burlington, Holton Hills. Excuse me. This conference was very successful. We had two inspiring and engaging keynote speakers, director Miller and Burlington mayor Rick Goldring. We heard great feedback from the participants about the workshops on mental health, equity and diversity, public speaking, world issues, and high school, all of which were organized and run by student senators. We delivered a presentation about student senate and student trustees. After the presentation, we asked how many people were interested in becoming student senators next year? And about three quarters of the room raised their hand. Our senators also organized a student voice session with the conference attendees where they led discussions about the major issues, questions, concerns, and ideas students have about their schools and their education. Overall, it was a fantastic day. Thank you so much to trustee Oliver, trustee Amos, and associate director Bog for coming down on Thursday to check out the workshops and talk to some students. We also want to thank Mr. Potras. Is that how you say it?
Jade Potras.
And Ms. Anabale. Our staff advisors and vice principals at EJ James and Robert Bateman respectively for all their help this year. They were always willing to go above and beyond in helping us achieve our goals. For example, Ms. A reached out to all secondary administrators. She wrote that, Ms. A. Reached out to all secondary administrators many, many times to help us get the word out about the student trustee election, which really helped us have a large number of candidates this year. Mr. Potras was instrumental in planning the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. He reached out to elementary administrators to register students, worked very closely with the events team at Sheridan, and helped us throughout the day on May 31st. Finally, we want to thank our student senators for doing an amazing job this year, both in terms of advocating for students at their schools and helping run another successful Halton Youth Learning Symposium. It was a pleasure working with Ms. A, Mr. Potras, and all of the extraordinary young leaders in the student senate. We could have, we could not have asked for a better team. Beyond the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium, we also attended our final OSTA-ECO conference, the annual general meeting from May 24th to May 27th. It was an amazing conference. The highlights were definitely Mark Kilberger's keynote speech and the opportunity to begin transitioning our incoming student trustees and to pass on advice to incoming student trustees from other school boards. We were also able to share some of our initiatives, like introducing the online student trustee election process and putting students on board committees with student trustees from across the province. Many have reached out to us for more information in hopes of implementing similar projects of their own, in their own boards. As well, on May 22nd, a number of our student senators were able to attend Public Student Empower Day, a conference run by OSTA-ECO's Public School Board Council in partnership with WE. And we learned from our attendees that they had a great time and learned a lot about leadership from the event. We want to thank the board for continuing to support OSTA-ECO and our ability to attend its professional development events and conferences. And Dasha states if there are any questions about a report, please feel free to send us an email. So there you go. An excellent report. Joanna, did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, thank you. Through your chairs. So I had the pleasure of attending the morning session. And despite the fact that it was an early start, 7:30 a.m., all the students were very happy and keen to be there. There was a lot of excitement and buzz in the room. And I have to say, our student trustees and the organizing committee of students and adult staff did a tremendous job with this symposium. So I want to congratulate them and keep up the good work.
Excellent. Trustee Amos.
I just wanted to build on some of trustee Oliver's comments that I went there later in the day and despite it being much later in the day, the enthusiasm and the activities in the classroom. It was, we have, we are going to be in good hands. These are all leaders and they are all going to be doing great things in our system and beyond. So exciting things to look forward to. And I'm looking forward to what our new student trustees do next year and build on their successes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we're now moving on to our action items for June 20th. So we're up to number 521, Halton District School Board Network Filter. Superintendent Trufan, report 18094 on page 51 of your board package. Welcome, superintendent Trufan.
Thank you very much. Trustees, you have a report in front of you that is recommending an expansion of our network filter from grade K to six and recommending the expansion from K to 12, basically our entire network, both on our Wi-Fi network and on our hardwire network. So it would include staff and students, any community member that would be using our Wi-Fi network as well. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have this evening.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Just a timing bee. Has this already been done? Has the previous filter been taken off and this new one in, the expansion of the filter? Or if not, when would we expect that to be done?
The recommendation is to do that and I believe.
Was it simply to rescind it?
Oh, yes.
To rescind the motion?
Correct.
So for me, the next piece is when do we put in place something to replace what we have?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you through the chair to trustee Daniele. Right now, we are working with a vendor on a firewall and a network filter. We are layering, what we're doing is we are layering this K to six filter. So that's on our end. So we would remove that and that can be removed in a very timely fashion.
Okay, so it's removed. Is the new one in place?
Yes.
Is there going to be any time at which we have a gap in which we do not have a filter?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. No.
Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair. We had Special Education Advisory Committee last night meeting. And we shared this motion or this coming to the table today. And we had some feedback that we thought we'd share with you and ask some questions. Can the filters cope with the context and nuances of questions on health? Would filters prevent or block teens in particular from accessing important online material about sexual identification, LGBTQ issues, sexually transmitted diseases, teen pregnancies, or anything else that would perhaps be available for teens to, you know, look for their own personal awareness? Or perhaps even augment a research assignment that they may be given, whether it's in science class or in health class?
Thank you through the chair to trustee Reynolds. I can answer that actually quite briefly. Absolutely not. That's not what the filter does. Academic resources, research papers, resources for young adults, students, staff to access research papers, that's not the intent of the filter. Staff would be able, and students would be able to access, whether it be sexual orientation, gender identity, digital addiction, with no problem whatsoever. The filter removes illicit content that is only appropriate for those 18 years and older.
Hello? Okay, thank you. So we definitely have a responsibility to set limits and teach students good digital stewardship. Will this new method of filtering, will there be any amendment to our, I want to say, safe internet usage education that we're currently delivering to all our students?
Thank you through the chair to trustee Reynolds. Again, that's really what we're doing with digital censorship. All of our teachers, all of our students are focusing on that lens, on the positive element of the internet and digital technology, respecting sites that are inappropriate, respecting passwords, respecting privacy of others. That's the world we live in right now. And certainly our teachers are encouraging, educating our young people on effective digital censorship skills. The filter, we already have the filter in place, but we are, it is on our end that we're running into problems because we're doing some authentication and layering of identifying people on what's appropriate, what's not appropriate.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. Superintendent Trufan, when we first put the filter on, we had consultation with the community and we received much feedback from students about the concerns about filtering, especially for high school students and grade seven and eights because sometimes one word can mean multiple things. And so now that we're going to be looking at filtering the whole network, are we going to be end up potentially blocking some of the things that students may need to access because of the multiple definitions of some words? And I mean, I just remember this was a lot of controversy at the time and I just want to make sure that we're not going to revisit that.
Thank you for that question and through the chair to trustee Amos. We absolutely have the ability to override the filter. And what I mean by that is if there is a site that perhaps is filtered and we deem it that it is not explicit pornographic material, we will unblock it. And that would be done in a very timely fashion. We have a process in place right now for that and we would continue that. I can tell you that the filter that we use is one of the best in the industry standard. And this is the world they live in, internet security and vulnerability. And our vendor is exceptional at categorizing appropriate explicit content.
Thank you for those reassurances.
Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you. This question may be for director Miller, but I'll just try to say, I wonder if, are we in step with what is being used by other school boards? I would imagine at code, there would be discussions about what other school boards are doing with this. And just wondering if we are in step with, I guess, the standards around the province.
If I may answer that question, because I have been doing a little bit of research on this for the last few years. So to the chair, trustee Gray. There's no board in the province that I'm aware of that is not filtering pornographic content on their entire network. Our surrounding boards, Tronel, Tronel Catholic, Upper Grand, Greater Essex, Peel, Bluewater, Lampton Kent, Simcoe, Waterloo, Troyman Lakeheads, Niagara, Hamilton, they all filter at minimum what we're doing, at minimum.
I would add, my colleagues and Gord's colleagues, superintendent Trufan's colleagues in the CIO position or whatever, were somewhat surprised that we were not doing the same.
Trust, I'm sorry, vice chair Al Harrison. Sorry, Jean.
I could just have a follow-up. I had a second part to this question. Have we had a legal opinion regarding this move? In that I guess we want to, as a board of trustees, probably be fully assured that we are covered in all areas, removing liability and vulnerability with regards to this. So have we had legal opinion?
Through your chair, Grevance, to trustee Gray. No, we have not had a legal opinion and I don't see a reason, I don't really see a reason to do it. I think we have a greater liability at the moment because we've actually, some could argue we're providing a root to pornographic material for some students in our board. So this will diminish our liabilities. And I mean, if the board directs me to get a legal opinion, I will do so, but I do not believe it's necessary. And considering that all boards in the province that we know of, we don't know, we haven't surveyed them all, but certainly all the GTA boards and west of us are doing this at a very minimum. I would say we are on pretty good, on pretty good, steady ground.
Vice chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, madam chair. I was just wondering whether the cost of the expanded filter will be similar to the current one? And I have a follow-up.
Thank you through the chair to vice chair Al Harrison. Yes, because we do have the filter in place right now through our vendor. And again, as I said, we are the ones that are cutting a piece out. So it's in place right now. So there is no additional cost to the board budget to do this.
That's great. And then secondly, how is the effectiveness monitored? Given the changing technologies, it seems that sometimes the folks with nefarious purposes are one step ahead. And I just wonder what processes we or the vendor have in place to keep track of that.
We are with one of the most reputable vendors for internet security at this time. Many boards across the province and organizations, corporations use this vendor. What are our, how are we monitoring? Certainly that's done through the classroom level. You know, if there's a situation that inappropriate content was accessed, that we rely, of course, on teachers in the schools and vice principals and principals. From a board perspective, we, there's been some changes in the last four years. Four years ago, we were not a fully implemented G-suite board. Four years ago, a lot of these sites weren't changing their IP. And I'm not going to get too technical this evening, but they weren't changing their IP addresses because they know they're being filtered out. They don't want to be filtered out. But so, they weren't secure HTTP sites four years ago either. Now they are. So I don't want to say they're getting smart, but they realize that they're being filtered out by organizations and certainly academic institutions. And we rely on this vendor to make sure that what we're asking our vendor to do, they do it.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you for the information you've brought us this evening. I'm hoping that I can tag on to what trustee Daniele mentioned previous, that your recommendation is only to rescind a motion. You've not followed that up with a subsequent motion to replace what we're currently doing with the expanded filter. And I would like to see a motion similar to M140133 added on that would say that we are going to provide this for all students in our board and staff in our board. And with the annual subscription not to exceed $100,000 per year. And just make a similar motion. Because if all we're doing is rescinding, we're not telling the public that we've actually expanded.
Director Miller.
Through your chair, Grevance, to trustee Collard. This is a bit of a challenge. We believe that this is an operational issue and that the original motion was an operational motion. And so we felt that we bring this to rescind this and in the body of it say that we will do so, that we will filter JK to 12. I mean, I guess there could be a debate about whether this is operational or not. We believe it is. But of course trustees may have a different opinion and that's perfectly okay. So that's the reason we didn't put another motion in there because we then believe that if trustees vote on the new motion, they're voting on an operational issue in that respect. We're not wedded to it, you know, we're receptive to the debate that may go here, but that's the reason behind it.
May I follow up, please? My concern here is that there are dollars attached and so it's a budgetary item. It's also since there was originally a motion and then we would be voting to rescind if there's no, at least a policy statement. We need something in writing to affirm that this is the direction we're taking. Otherwise, we could just be saying we're not filtering anything because there's nothing to replace the motion.
Through your chair, Grevance, to trustee Collard. What we're proposing, there is no money attached. There was money attached on the original one. There's no additional money. Let's put it that way. We do have money for filters, yeah. But the very last statement of the report says to this end, well, you know what it says. "To this end, the board is expanding its filter for pornographic websites to the entire network." network." I, we're, no, we're, so.
I would just like to say we do have policies and procedures regarding the safe use of technology, and this should be part of our policy and procedure and, and the safe use of technology documentation that we have.
Through your chaired events to trustee Collard, as trustees are aware, we're certainly doing, we're doing a policy review right now. We could pass this information on to our, the individual, the lawyer that's doing the policy review to incorporate it in. That's not an issue for us. And like I said, we're not, we're wedded to it. We just were trying to figure out how to deal with this in this way, but can certainly do that. The will of the board, though, is, is that what the board would like us to do? It's not really a vote, but I'm glad.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I think what's at issue here is that this was a trustee motion, and so to rescind the trustee motion will make the optics now look like the trustees have nothing to say about that we cared about having a filter and going forward that we do not care about a filter is the optics of it. I think that's it. But could we simply amend the motion to be resolved that the Halton District School Board rescind motion M140133 effective immediately, given that a new and better system is being put in operationally?
It's fine. Through your chaired events to trustee Daniele, I, yeah, we're totally, we're totally fine with that. Is that the way it can work?
It closes the circle for us as trustees.
Sure, no, no problem, no problem. I mean, we were aware that it put trustees in an awkward position, but I, but I thought you already were in an awkward position because the original motion was a kind of an operational motion to begin with, right? So, but yeah, for sure, we can, we can do that.
I would like to make that amendment, please. It's coming next week, okay, so.
It'll come back with the amendment. Okay, seeing no more questions, it will be back in two weeks. Thank you very much, Superintendent Trufan. Okay, next, we have number 522, Budget. Superintendent Verhman, report 18090 on page 52 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Verhman.
Thank you to the Board of Trustees. It is a pleasure this evening to present the 2018-2019 budget. It has been culmination of a lot of work by a lot of individuals. And certainly, I'd like to acknowledge the budget staff and Controller Jackie Sweetman and Allison Robertson. This evening, we will highlight some of the key components of the budget. There you go, thank you. Firstly, we want to certainly acknowledge that the 2018-2019 operating capital budgets of the Halton District School Board have been developed with the vision that every student will explore and enhance their potential, passions, and strengths to thrive as contributing global citizens. In terms of the budget development process itself, the key objectives of the process are to ensure that we align our financial resources with our strategic plan, our multi-year operational plan, our special education plan, to ensure that we identify school-based staffing requirements, we gather input from our stakeholder groups, and that we ensure ministry compliance. With respect to enrollment, again, in 2018-19, we are projecting a small increase over the 2017-18 original budget, or original enrollment projection. And we are projecting just over 64,641 students, which is an increase from last year, the original projection of 403 students, or 0.63%. We have demonstrated on a bar graph the change in enrollment from the last, for the last 10 years. And again, we are one of the few boards that continue to grow in our enrollment, although it is slowing a bit, we are still, again, continuing to grow. In terms of our revenues, based on the ministry allocation, ministry grants for student needs, again, the majority of our funding is, is from the province through the GSN, just over 90%. And then we've highlighted some of the additional revenue sources. In terms of expenditures, and these are based on ministry expenditure categories, the majority of our expenditures of the 763 million projected expenditures, approximately 78.5 are with respect to instruction, with pupil accommodation the next largest component. I believe we have seen this graph earlier this evening. This represents our, or the Halton District School Board average per pupil funding versus the provincial average. And again, as has been alluded to earlier this evening, we continue to be below the provincial average and have been in, in that situation for at least 10 years. And again, as was explained earlier, there is some direction to, to provide further direction or further information to the public on this. In terms of the actual dollars itself, for 2018-19, we're approximately $1,300 below the provincial average. What we have done and included in the agenda package with the budget book is that we've highlighted some of the resources that are included in the operational budget to support the multi-year plan. And they are based, and again, on our, our three key components of engagement and achievement, equity and well-being, and stewardship and resources. I'm not going to review each of these since they are included in both the actual report and the budget book, but just wanted to highlight that we continue, despite a tight budget, continue to support the multi-year plan. So again, under engagement and achievement, equity and well-being, stewardship and resources. And finally, we just want to highlight that it is a balanced budget based on ministry definition, that it meets all of the ministry and board reporting accountability requirements. And the budget, once approved, will be filed by the, to the Ministry of Education by the end of June. And at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
We do have at least one, trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to say, I know we're not studying on this until two weeks from now, but two weeks from now is an extremely heavy agenda, so I don't want to take the time to say it now. I do want to spend, I want to say it now. This is so much more than just a 52-page report. This is, I don't know how many PowerPoints you prepared for us. I lost track of how many meetings we had on the budget and how many questions were asked and the number of times you and your staff came out in the evenings to make sure that we were up to date and we understood this. So I know the public will often see that, sees that we get at one meeting, we approve at the next, and they don't see all the work that goes into it behind that, all the countless meetings. And I just wanted to say thank you so much. I feel very, very prepared with this budget, thanks to the time that you and Jackie and Allison put into this. So thank you so much.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your Chair. And I too would like to echo sentiments expressed by trustee Daniele. I do have a couple of questions. One pertains to Appendix A2. There is a projected decrease in the ECEs, the early childhood educators. So I wonder if you can elaborate on that? And then I have a question after that one. Would it be possible to get the lights back on? Thank you very much.
I'm just wondering what that decrease might be due to, how it can be explained.
Through the Chair, to trustee Oliver, we have the same number of educate, early childhood educators. So it is not the change in the FTE, but I believe it's a reduction in the actual supply time. So we did see that maybe we were, the budget that we set for the supply was a little bit high, so we're reducing the supply budget.
Thank you. And then my, my next question pertains to, I believe it's section one of the draft budget, the key highlights, page 30, it's detail of instruction, staff development expense. In the table, there is a projected decrease for research, safe schools, safety and well-being, and student success. And I wonder if you can elaborate on that. It's page 30.
I've got it, but through your chaired events to trustee Oliver, one of the reductions you've mentioned was safe schools and safety and well-being. Can we take that, because you've asked about why those reductions? We can take that back, because Superintendent Padra Barak's not here this evening, and that's his portfolio, but I think maybe he will answer the other ones. We could take it back and bring that answer.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm happy to receive the answer at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So can you, okay, and Superintendent Blackwell can take the research one? And Julie, can you take student success? Yeah.
So through the Chair to trustee Oliver, within the research department, if you're aware, we currently have three full-time teachers that are in our research department. One of the teachers is, that's in the role, is in an acting position. As that role comes to an end this year, we are going to be posting for an external researcher that is not an educator. And that is a reduction in cost of, for the salary for that position.
Through, through the Chair to trustee Oliver, so that page reflects some of the cuts that were had to be made this year in order to reach a balanced budget. And so within the student success portion of that, which falls under secondary program, these were some of the cuts as well. And so we have looked at things where, such as our, our safety budget, knowing that we, if we need to, because it's not necessarily that something's going to break, that we would be able to come back to that, but we've had to look to where we could, in order to be balanced, come into. So rather than our contingency fundings for supports for programs within tech ed and those types of things, we've, we're going with the optimistic look that everything will be fine and that we will be able to use that money elsewhere and not have to worry about the repairing piece at this point.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I mean, relative to the, to the budget, the cuts are, are small, relatively small. Just maybe student success looks a little bit steeper, so I'm just concerned about that.
And certainly, I can bring you back a detailed report for the next meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you for all your hard work, making this a balanced budget, especially in difficult times. And I know as we're, as the board grows and with the way the funding is, which we referred to earlier, it is becoming more and more challenging to have the balanced budget. But I'd like to thank you, Superintendent Verhman, and I'd like to thank Controller Sweetman and Allison for all your hard work and for everyone who's involved with this. And I know it's all the senior admin as well, because some difficult choices had to be made to see where things could be brought more into line or where things may not be able to do this next year. And I know we all want to do everything, but sometimes we have to make choices. So I'd like to thank you for all the hard work that went into this. And I'm so happy that you were able to create the balanced budget, because I know at first maybe you thought you might not be able to. And I've seen some other boards have actually passed some deficit budgets, and I'm glad we're not in that situation. So thank you for that.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you very much. And like my colleagues before me, thanks for all of the work that's gone into preparing this. This is a three-quarters of a billion-dollar budget, which is a really big number. And so coming to a balanced point is, is something. I wanted to ask specifically about the reduction of 750,000, which represents roughly 1% of our budget, and just get a handle on that piece and the impacts that it will have, because my understanding is that that's a external process that has been imposed by the Ministry of Education this year. And a 1% reduction in that regard, when our budget's already pretty tight, is a little bit hard to handle. Thanks.
Thank you. Through the Chair, to the Vice Chair, I believe you're referring to the reduction in investment income. So as part of the announcement, the GSN announcement that came out in the middle of April, the end of April, the ministry has put a process in place that impacts the timing of the cash flow of the grants. So it's not impacting the dollar amount itself, but it's impacting the, the timing of when we receive it. So based on, on that change, we will be receiving amounts at a later point in time or reduced amounts at later point in time, which reduces the amount of interest that we're able to, to earn in some of our, in our bank accounts. And for us, that equates to just over $750,000, which again is significant. In terms of the impact, based on the ministry compliance requirements, we, when we look at our expenditures and revenue, any investment income is offset or is chartered, allocated against our board administration governance envelope. So in prior years, we, as a board, have been in a position where expenditures are below the, the revenue for board admin and governance. This is certainly going to, to make that quite a bit more difficult to achieve in terms of ministry compliance. And as we go in future years, again, it's going to be a pressure in that line. Again, we have been able, over the past years, to ensure we are compliant by having expenditures less than revenue. But this is, again, as a result of the change in, in ministry direction with respect to cash flow for, for grants, receipt of grants.
Just follow up. So I just wonder whether feedback has been provided to the ministry in that regard in terms of impact. I'm sure that they perhaps understood.
To the Chair, to the Vice Chair, certainly, all of the superintendents, when this information was, was received, did provide significant feedback to the ministry because it is impacting all boards in the province. And we believe that there were different options that could have been put into place that would achieve what the ministry was hoping to achieve, but it with different, in a different manner that would minimize the impact to boards. And we continue to, you know, to lobby as a group of superintendents to, to look at, have the ministry review this, because again, it is a significant change from, 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 for us and for other boards in the province.
You can make one final point.
Sorry, just on the same topic again, and whether it would be helpful for the Board of Trustees to make any motion in that regard to support that lobbying. It sort of ties in a little bit to the fair funding work that's being done. So we don't have to answer now necessarily, but just planting a bug for my colleagues, I guess, on what the appropriateness of, of that, because that's really bothersome to me.
Through the Chair, certainly as part of the, the input that the trustee associations, OPSVA, provide to the ministry on an annual basis, they do comment on. OPSVA, provide to the ministry on an annual basis, they do comment on the funding and the changes in funding from many years. So that would be certainly another avenue that could be used through, again, the trustee associations to ensure that the ministry is aware of the impact it's having on boards. And, and again, that would certainly be another avenue for trustees.
Trustee Pappin.
Thank you. Through the chair to superintendent Vermin and her team, thank you very much for all your hard work and especially balancing the budget. My question is around transportation. On page thirty-two, there's, the first one is the home-to-school, which includes French immersion. And I'm just curious about whether the increase has to do with not having the entry French immersion year this year, with the grade two entry starting in September.
Through the chair, French immersion typically is included under home-to-school because of the difficulty of identifying what the specific cost would be if those students did not go to, to the specific French immersion school. The reason for the increase from the prior year is mainly as a result of the renegotiation of quite a few of our contracts with our carriers, because of the change in, or a number of things, change in minimum wage, and also the difficulty that boards have had recruiting. There certainly was an emphasis by our carriers to look at what they were paying the drivers and looking at a benefit package. So approximately, I think three-quarters of our routes were re-tendered this year, and that certainly accounts for the majority of the difference from the prior year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And, yeah, sure.
Through you chaired events to trustee Pappin. The increase is not due to increased number of students, other than perhaps a little bit through growth. It's the cost that Lucy said, it's also fuel costs and all those other things as well have done, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I have another transportation question around the HOPEs transportation. I noticed it's gone down by a third, and I'm just curious why such a large decrease in that amount.
Through you chaired events to trustee Pappin. It's probably, we can confirm that with superintendent Padra Barak. It's probably due to fewer kids having to access the system, because some of those students in our HOPEs program take taxis, not, we don't have buses go there. And we only have two or three sites, three sites, I think, right? Two, two sites for HOPEs programs. So it's likely due to fewer students going into the programs. But we, associate director both will get the accurate information for you for next meeting.
Thank you.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair, and again, thank you for a balanced budget. That always is excellent news. I do also have a question about transportation, and this one may be likely more difficult to answer. And if you don't have the answer now, I'm happy to wait to the next meeting. Page thirty-two, the transportation expense table nicely outlines transportation for different programs and accommodations. And when I look at the home-to-school, which includes French immersion, I feel like we're that much closer to being able to actually get at transportation specific to French immersion. So I'm wondering if there is a, a way to be able to kind of extract the number of students that are transported, or maybe what proportion of that cost they would comprise.
Through the chair, certainly I will speak with Karen LaCoix, the general manager of Transportation Services. As we have been able to, you know, change in the software and change some of the parameters that are included in the software to calculate differences or distances, we will speak to her to see if we're able to get a better understanding of the impact of French immersion with respect to this line. I know in the past it has been problematic, but we'll certainly touch base with her to determine how we can get a better understanding of the specific component of French immersion in this line.
Director Miller.
Through you chaired events to trustee Oliver, just to add to superintendent Vermin's comments, I have had those conversations with general manager LaCoix around French immersion busing. It is, it is pretty complex to delineate how they go, because the kids are all on the same buses, English students, because there's different drop-offs and so on. So it's, I know there's some new technology that may aid in that, but it is difficult to do. I would say this, though, in terms of French immersion uptake, it's about, it's at least six to seven percent less than what it has been in previous years. So the full effect, which may take buses off the road in September that we're not aware of yet, the full effect of the Program Viability Committee or the, the motion approved by this Board of Trustees around starting French in grade two, I don't think we will be able to figure that out for at least a year or two, because there's going to be a lot of to-ing and fro-ing for the, in the short term, for sure, so.
Seeing no more speakers. Thank you very much for all your work on this, and we will see you in a couple weeks. Thank you. Okay, next up is number five-two-three, education development charge bylaw. Executive Manager Renzella. Superintendent Vermin, report one-eight-zero-nine-five on page one-hundred-and-four of your board package. Welcome.
Thank you. The report before you this evening is more or less capsulizing the presentation that our consultants did on May sixteenth, identifies the rate charges, the bylaw that is going to be coming forward at the June twentieth board meeting for approval. As trustees are aware, the intention was initially to have the bylaw adopted on May sixteenth, but we had not received Ministry of Education approval. We should get that approval subsequent to the June seventh provincial election. Be glad to answer any questions from trustees.
So far seeing none. I guess we'll move on to the next one then.
Thank you. We have, before you this evening is the LTAP. I'm not going to undertake a presentation. Nothing has changed substantially since the initial presentation in early May. What we have done for the benefit of trustees is that we've supplied you with a brand-new, clean copy of the LTAP. There have been some minor changes, tweaks mainly relating to OTG that, new OTGs for some schools that was brought to our attention. And in fact, in the board report, any changes that have been made have been bolded for the benefit of trustees. Again, nothing substantial to, to that effect. The only other item that I wanted to address was with respect to our public consultation and from, in terms of community feedback. You know, we, we took, you know, a significant amount of effort in terms of advising the community of the LTAP and soliciting feedback. Again, this year we had eight thousand one hundred and eighteen hits on the LTAP site as compared to thirty-six hundred and forty-six last year, so a substantial increase. So that, that was one good thing. And then it kind of relate to how many additional comments, responses we received. We received about twenty more compared to last year. Overall, the responses basically felt that accommodation issues were not addressed in the document. Twenty-nine percent were neutral and about thirty-four percent were satisfied that the LTAP addressed accommodation issues. And, you know, I'm not going to go through the comments outlined in, in the appendix A. I think we are moving forward to, in terms of trying to address those comments, we're looking at building new schools, opening new schools. We've designated in terms of the, the new Milton High School, the Milton number eleven school that will be coming out forward, as well as the new Northeast Oakville Public School, number two public school. We are designating sites in, in the Georgetown Vision Program. Some of the comments, I think, you know, maybe they were not informed of, of some of the actions the board was going through in terms of closing the gap initiative, as well as the iStem program process. And I think a lot of them, there are still some, how would you say, it's some issues and concerns related to the closure of our, of our two high schools and the impacts and of programming and accommodation in, 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 in the schools. But generally speaking, there's nothing really substantial that we can say that requires amendment or changes to the, to the LTAP. One thing that I do want to take, present and take forward is that, you know, we really want to ensure that we've really tried to communicate more effectively with the community, because there seems to be a lot of the same questions coming up year after year. So I'm, I'm trying to wrap my mind on, on how to better engage some of those, those parents and, and community members about responding to their queries. So we do have an FAQ. I don't know if they're clicking onto it as part of the LTAP, but we're, we'll have to kind of think of a, a better way or an improved way to address some of their concerns and questions. This report is going before the board on, again, June twentieth. Glad to answer any, any other questions. Thank you.
We have a couple of people on our speakers list. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair to Mr. Renzella. Thanks very much for the report. I'm looking at appendix A, and actually my, I think you've started to answer some of my questions. A lot of the comments seem like they will be recurring comments. And, and I'm wondering if, if you have a plan for how to maybe have an evergreen document or something where you can track those comments and have an answer for them, so that staff and trustees are able to quickly refer and, and provide the community with the answers. And then maybe, as you were referring to the FAQ portion of the site, have that there so parents can refer and, and get their answer from that.
Yes, and in fact, what the intention is that once the board approves the LTAP, we will be sending a notice to the community that it has been approved, and that we'll try to direct, we will direct them to the FAQ section with respect to some of their questions and comments.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Renzella, and all of your staff for, for the great report that was put together this year for the LTAP, because every year you provide more information, it's more readable and easier for us to understand, as well as the community. And the information in there provides the community, and I know you're saying that maybe there's not enough, but I do feel that every year you provide more. So I know you will take the feedback that you're receiving, and you will be able to turn it around and provide more again in the future. But I'd like to thank you, because it's such a complex document, and I know sometimes the community feels that the numbers are not real, but we do know how much work goes into it, and I know that there is a solid foundation. And if they ever looked at what the stats were over the past, and maybe that's something you could incorporate to show your differences, I think they would see that there is a lot of reliability in that report. I did, I just wanted to also say that one of the things that I noticed as one of the comments under other was a request for a different based funding formula for schools. So again, here's not understanding how things are funded and the fact that schools are funded a different way. And I think it's just something that we as trustees need to be aware of, so that when we're sharing how we're funded, things are, we can try to explain to the community that type of information. I just wanted to bring that point up. I didn't know if other trustees had seen it. But thank you again for all of your hard work on this, and to your staff.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Renzella. Could you please inform me how much we expect, how many students we expect to yield from a condominium?
I, I don't have the, it depends on the location. Different municipalities may have different yields. Typically condominiums, and again, they're high density, the types of units that they have do not generate significant numbers of children. You know, if it's a batch or a studio, one-bedroom, you're not, and maybe two-bedroom units, you're, you're not going to get very many students. There, it's really significantly low, and I, I can't tell you offhand what the number is, but it's like point zero-one-eight students per, per unit, but I can get back to you on, on, on that. If you're looking for a specific community, or like Burlington, we, we do have, we have created, or we do have projections or pupil yields by, by, by municipality. But we typically don't get a lot. And I know that's a concern from the community that we're going to get a large number of students, and we, our experience has been that we haven't, unless some of these units start to change dramatically in terms of size and accommodation, like three-bedroom units and whatnot. But I'm, you know, it depends on market and whatnot.
Thank you. If I could get that information, I would appreciate it.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is with respect to Southwest Oakville. And I note that in the comments, we received a number of them expressing frustration around the aging facilities in South Oakville. And I think it speaks somewhat to trustee Amos's point around, you know, understanding of where the, those monies would come from and the processes that we would need to go through to either replace and/or enhance those facilities. Okay, my question is with respect to Samuel Curtis Estates in particular. I see we have comments on both sides. A, would like to attend Oakville schools, and B, would like to attend Burlington schools. So I was wondering whether you could comment on whether there was more one way or the other, and I know it's all anecdotal, it's not a statistically relevant sample or anything. And then secondly, if you could comment on the process that we would need to go through to redirect students?
I'd, I'd have to get back to you on the numbers and on how many responded from, with respect to that, so I don't know offhand. Notwithstanding anything else, you can see that there is divergence of opinion as to what, what should happen in that community. As we, as trustees are aware, the board would, is required through its school boundary review procedures to undertake a school boundary, and the board trustees would have to approve a school boundary review process to be undertaken for this area, which, in order to engage the community. And that would involve, first of all, staring, setting up a boundary review steering committee made up of trustees and staff, and subsequently a boundary review committee that would consist of parents of the affected communities. You know, at this point in time, I can't say who, what schools would be involved, but, you know, if Samuel Curtis is involved, we would of course include the schools that, where those students are currently attending, and then look at schools that may be accommodating those students moving forward. So through that process, I, you know, there would be a number of ideas shared, and, and then ultimately, we would take options out to the community for public consultation to see what they are, and then ultimately would come back here for trustees for approval. So that process would not start until the trustees would approve the process, starting sometime in September of this coming school year, and with the intention of any decision coming before the board in February of 2019.
Seeing no more speakers. Thank you very much for your extensive, complex, and key report. I just want to make note, and you'll see this in your package as well, that on June twentieth, the agenda will also include the special education plan and operational plan as action items. So we can go back and review those before the next meeting. So the only information item that is in our package is actually the report that went with the presentation earlier today, so we're not going to discuss that again. Next is number five-four, notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion? You have one. Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. I just thought I'd mix things up a little bit. I just wanted to go back to the discussion around the reduction resulting from cash flow and perhaps put forward a motion that we correspond with the ministry and/or OPSA and/or both to express the challenges that are presented due to that action. So I'm going to put that out there now and correspond with trustees in the interim in terms of the appropriateness of that.
Okay, great. No one else is putting forth a notice of motion? Next is the director's report. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Grabens. I am first going to turn to Superintendent Puccatelli who has, and I don't even think, Puccetti. Oh my goodness. Sorry, Maya.
Maya's gonna have to change her name.
Yeah. I can't see your name tag. I don't even think trustee Danielli knows this great news that Superintendent Maya will say.
Through you, Madam Chair and trustee Danielli. We received a letter just the other day in the office that Milton Heritage has decided to give an award to Martin Street School. They were taken with the design and the, the architectural value that was preserved through the design and there will be a ceremony. They don't have a date yet and at this point they're just letting us know that we are going to receive an award. I went to visit the school. It is a beautiful school. I would happily live in that library.
Could you let me know?
Thank you. And I have to say, why I say Puccatelli is I have a friend and he will, he will be shocked that I'm mentioning his name here, whose name is Nick Pizzatelli. And so it's the Telly part that's getting me all confused still. Anyway, I have some other quick news. I got, I received this, I just received it a couple of weeks ago, although it was dated March 28th. It's some results from our schools participating in Terry Fox. And the Terry Fox run has raised over $6.9 million for 4,200 schools. Halton schools have done incredibly well and I will share the full list with the trustees so you will see where your schools are on what they raised this year and what they've raised over the total. But we have 10 schools in our board who have raised over $100,000 for the, for the Terry Fox run over the years that it's been run. And I just want to highlight one particular we school, Abbey Lane Public School in Oakville has raised over the years $71,000. And I know many trustees may not know that, but it's a tiny little school in North Oakville and that they've raised 71,000. So I will share this entire list with trustees so you can reach out and however you want to do that. Second, I have Halton Food for Thought Community Champion Awards. The Halton Families for Families Community Champion Award winners are from Anjay MacArthur Elementary School and it's a group nomination. So there's several people on the, on the list and I think they deserve to have their names listed. Nia Brandt, Catherine MacArthur, Cheryl Hales, Kristy Vander, Vanderbilt, Amanda King, Shanika Wilson, Jordan Allen. Also from Milton, Craig Keelberger Secondary School, Rajani Ryle Peters, Marcia Sims Luke, David Sprague, Angelica Henning, Ms. AJ Abdul, Melissa Wagner, Daniel Innes, Mr. Woodley, Ms. Holmes, Cheryl Clark, Sheena McGwigan, Kevin Holdcroft, Simon Vanelis. From Burlington, Lester B Pearson High School, Lorraine Federko, Corey Trod, who received an Inspire Award this evening, Mrs. Stickles, Mrs. Sharma, Madame Janice, Mr. Zinn, Mrs. Grigger, Mrs. Wernicki, Mr. Muhic, Mrs. Manzella, who's, I know her, she's also received an Inspire Award, Mr. Jage, Madame Lindsay, Ms. Marsh and Mr. Clark. So congratulations to those schools and our board. And finally, I have an OCTI award, which is the Ontario Council for Technology Education Award. And this is a really prestigious award and we have a teacher from Aldershot, Wade Richardson, a secondary teacher who has demonstrated outstanding commitment to development, delivery and promotion of technological, technological education. And in fact, I probably should have got trustee Reynolds to do this because both are from her area. The other winner is Chris Arnold from Burlington Central High School, who was named recipient of the Technological Education Leadership Award presented by the Ontario Council for Technology Education. And that is my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Communications from the chair. So I just want to mention that I attended the Eddie's Film Festival on May 29th and it was absolutely fabulous. I was blown away by the films and other, it's funny calling it film because none of it's actually on the actual film. On all the digital submissions, they had over 250, I believe. And it really brings in partners to, to work, to judge and to work with the kids. Kojiko also supplies some money for prizes. So we'd like to, to thank them to, as being part of a, part of the whole thing. They really did it up nicely with red carpets and balloons and Craig Keelberger Food School catered it and it was perfect. And then also I attended and trustee Collard attended as well, the EA dinner on the 30th and that was a lovely dinner. Lots of interesting conversations and it's always nice seeing the awards that, when people recognize within the community, within our system. And also just a note that various trustees, including myself, have been attending and organizing provincial candidate meetings and debates and they have been very interesting. We've been trying to get out questions with regards to the education funding and all sorts of questions with regards to education in general. And trustee Danielli did an excellent job actually organizing a meeting herself in Milton. It was well attended and, yeah, unfortunately two candidates didn't attend. That's their loss. It was a lovely evening. And it was a hit and miss with regards to whether candidates were informed about our issues and whether the appropriate education questions were even asked, though we did send them out and submit them at every occasion possible. So thank you very much to everybody that did attend and tried to, to bring our agenda And now we're up to committee reports. Actually, can you put yourself back on again? You're so fast. Trustee Danielli.
I'm, I'm putting this in the committee reports because it is OPSA related. My thanks to the trustees who were able to attend OPSA this weekend. I know it's a very busy time of year. The OPSA AGM was held this weekend. A couple of things that were notable from that AGM. My personal thanks both to Director Miller, who spoke briefly but eloquently on our French immersion plans and the innovation that we're showing in innovation. And if you thought, you sped through your presentation, Superintendent Newton was phenomenal in getting through her entire presentation on innovation. And I know I've been still, even today, I'm getting phone calls from trustees from around the province with questions regarding either Director Miller or Superintendent Newton's presentation. So thank you so much for taking the time to be in Niagara Falls to educate my colleagues from around the province. It was very much appreciated. We did have our regional meeting on this Saturday and I'm very, very pleased to say that at the regional meeting, our very own Jean Gray was elected to the Policy Development Work Team. And, yeah. And Amy Collard was elected to serve as the alternate on both the Policy Development Work Team and the Education Work Team. So thank you both for putting names forward in those elections and being elected to represent. For those who, who may not be aware, they are part of Central West, so they will actually be representing seven school boards within those roles. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. Just as a continuance of that report, trustee Danielli didn't mention that she is the, for next year, the Chair of Central West, again, continuing in her role as the Chair as she has been for the last couple of years. So returning again to that role. Thank you. I'd like to just add a little bit of the Inspire Award report. Something was sent out to the trustees within the last 48 hours, I believe, but we do look forward to acknowledging the recipients at our next, our next board meeting, those being the recipients for the month of May. And I thank Gail Gortmaker and her office team for helping us to do a quick step on this one and, and have this presentation at that time. And thank you to the trustees who were able to help with the evaluation and assessment of the nominations.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. There's not much left on the OPSA report for me to give. So I just wanted to mention that Kathy Abraham is the new president of OPSA, Michael Barrett is the new first vice president and Carol Ann Sloot from Central West is the second vice president. So we have represented, representation from north, east and west, which is kind of nice. And I'm sure that they'll work together as an effective team and I was very pleased to see them putting their names forward. The AGM was very well attended and the presentations were amazing. We had some really lively conversation and I will be providing a report to trustees, if not on June 20th, then in September.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, committee of the whole meeting is coming up on June 13th. And on the agenda currently, we have a communications report regarding marketing and branding strategy. Trustee Collard, I was going to ask whether the parliamentarian report will be coming forward. And then lastly, we'll have some time to look at the governance evaluation piece. And this is a shout out to other trustees who are leading committees for any other agenda items. This will be our last committee meeting of the school year as we're off on the 27th. Many may be attending convocations that night.
Go ahead and respond.
I spoke with Sheila McKinnon when I was at the OPSA AGM and she is not ready with her report, so we won't have it for, we won't, I guess we won't get to it until September now because this is our last committee of the whole, which is unfortunate because I really was hoping we would get it done before the summer. But the timing being what it is, it will be in September.
Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I'd like to give the Special Education Advisory Committee report. We had our last meeting the year, last night and it was well attended. Thank you to Chair Grabens and trustee Gray for, for joining us. The topics of discussion were, we, Superintendent Zonnafeld had shared with us the grade four screening report that looked at the improvements to the process. And the Spec Ed Committee heard that, to their delight, that there was no reduction in the Spec Ed budget. Majority approved the Spec Ed plan with LDAH, who will be bringing a minority report to our board. There was a reminder that the Spec, Special Athletes Track Meet, June 20th, Garth Webb Secondary School from 9:30 to 2:00. And a shout out to the Opnus Club, who we learned for the last number of years has been providing food for all our track and field students and staff, free of charge. And so shout out to them. It's our, the year of, 31st year, so it's a special event this year with an expansion of different events. The other resounding success around the table was the review of the MMR outdoor learning space. The Special Education Committee was really, gave lots of props to the, to the, to the, looking at the physical layout of the outdoor learning facility. They were delighted to see it was accessible, integrated with the entire school and provided basically an outdoor space for everyone. It's everyone's space. And if I've missed anything, if trustee Papin or Collard wants to add in, I think I captured most of it.
I just want to, since I was listening to the committee report, committee last night, I also want to mention that the chair was, mentioned that he was very happy with the integration committee meetings and that he's hoping there will be another one in October. He, he was, he saw a lot of value of having CAC sit on that committee. So I just wanted to make sure that was there. Oh, trustee.
Through the chair, I just wanted to add, we had a very healthy discussion on the filter that is coming in and going out. So thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to trustee questions and comments.
I just wanted to share a couple of good news things if I, my computer's being slow enough. The first is Mun's Public School this year for a fundraiser did a cookbook. It's called Get a Taste of Mun's and every student contributed a recipe in here and I'll tell you, some of them look really delicious. And so I just thought it's a really cool idea because it highlights some of the, the different backgrounds of the different students with the different recipes and what a great way to share some of the things that are happening or the, the background, your background in this kind of a book. So just wanted to let you know about that. The other item I wanted to let you know is about a debate, some debate students at White Oaks. The junior debate team won the Junior National Debate Championship in Calgary in May. Winning team was Heather Lai, Grace Zhu and the second White Oaks team of Catherine Pozios and Amy Zhang made the semifinals and Catherine Pozios was the top speaker. So in the semifinals with a team, with a field of 52 teams across Canada, there were only four teams left and two of those were from White Oaks. So that's the, one of some of the best results they've ever received. And the seniors also did really well in the senior nationals in St. John's two weeks earlier. Han Lee and Megan Khan made the quarterfinals in English and Catherine Pozios and Abby Robitelli were runners up in the French final. And Catherine is in grade nine and Abby is in grade 10, so they still got some debating left in them. And Abby was seventh in the national French individuals standing. So I just think some, that's, I wanted to share these exciting results because again, our board is being represented nationally.
That's great news. Trustee Papin.
Thank you. Through, through the chair, I just wanted to share about, tell you about the great event that took place at Lester B Pearson last weekend. The event was a two-day event running from June 1st to June 2nd. It was an awesome event for anybody who was there. The weather cooperated. Around 1:30 on Friday, we had a little bit of lightning. Around one-thirty on Friday, we had a little bit of lightning, but that passed quickly. And then, around three-thirty, just before the crowd started to arrive, we had a little bit of rain, but that wasn't too bad either. So, around four o'clock, the crowd started arriving, and they played sports. There were five different sports set up. Basketball in the gymnasium, soccer, rugby, field hockey. I think that's it, yeah. All over the fields. There were three food trucks set up, which served food through most of the night, and a DJ that played through most of the afternoon and into the night. We had a pep rally by the Burlington Teen Tour Band, and they played O Canada, which was really a rallying cry for everybody. Sounded great, and they performed excellent. And as the sports games continued, people were mingling. People were meeting up with people they hadn't seen in years. It was a wonderful experience. And then, at the end, around nine o'clock, we had the closing ceremonies, and the awards were given out. I wanted to thank Mr. Kevin Reposo, but I noticed he's just left. For all his hard work on both of the days, he did mention to Superintendent Pennyfather that it was one of the best Halton District School Board events he had ever been to. So, that was a very nice compliment for us. And then, around nine-fifteen, the fireworks started, and a lot of people either stayed around or went home and came back for the fireworks. And I noticed all the houses around the field were also watching the fireworks, like they were sitting up by their fence, and the lights were on. So, it was really nice. And then, on Saturday, we had an open house from two to four, which included tours of the school and the library. And there were all decades set up all around different areas in the school. And I was in that area when you first come into the school, where they have the benches and the lockers. And I met a woman, her name is Ruby Samra, and she was in the first graduating class. And her nephew is going to graduate this year. So, I said, well, you've got to come, because you're like the Alpha and the Omega. And the closing ceremonies started at five o'clock. And we had a Pearson graduate, Sarah Harmer, singing O Canada. We had another Alpha and Omega. We had the first and the last principals giving speeches, David Katz and Principal David Katz and Principal Lorraine Federcou. And speeches by former staff, former students, current staff, current students, all great, all describing their experiences at Pearson. And we had two songs sung by the choir, which included our own Chair Grabens. And the songs were so appropriate. I remember the title of the second one, which was Gone, Gone, Gone. And the first one was Morning Glow. It was amazing. And as the evening ended, there was a memorabilia relay, which took three artifacts, and they were walked from Pearson all the way over to MM Robinson. So, it was, it was really amazing. So, I thank the committee, Superintendent Blackwell, Principal Federcou, and Chair, sorry, Chair Grabens for all your hard work. Thank you.
I'm just going to add a couple of names on that. So, Janet March, who is a phys ed teacher over at Pearson, organized Friday night. Her, she headed that committee, and that committee was passionate about, about that. And then, Nigel Scott organized the, the actual closing ceremony. And Robin Baxter handled the catering and the reception afterwards. And of course, Lorraine Federcou just, she carried, she carried the whole thing. So, I understand that when they had the mascots meeting on Upper Middle Road, and there was all sorts of honking and all sorts of stuff going on, it was really, you know, the event was very, very positive. It was, you know, there were moments that, that were a little, that were just, you know, caught your breath a bit, but overall, it was a fabulous, respectful, lovely event. Oh, and yes, Patricia Pearson also spoke at the event. Yes, very, very well-done, very, very appropriate.
Actually, she shared a story about her high school graduation, I think it was, where she said that her grandfather was the speaker for her high school graduation. Was it her father? Oh, okay. I thought it was Lesterby. Anyway, he spoke for forty-five minutes on, you know, some government issue. And she was just mortified, because, you know.
I would just add, her father was Jeffrey Pearson. And when I was Vice Principal of Pearson, I invited him to come to speak at Pearson. And he had been the Canadian Ambassador to the former Soviet Union. And he spoke a lot about the Cold War, so. Not, not when he came to Pearson at that time, he was a very engaging speaker, but...
Okay, so we're going to keep going on the speakers list here. So, we have trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. Nothing but great news up in the hills. Three quick reports. The Halton Hills School Community Council Meeting held their last meeting two weeks ago, and the focus of that meeting was on gauging parents. And all of the representatives from the fifteen schools spoke about their activities and the successes they met with this past year. And so, that was a very positive event. Second thing to report is, this past weekend, after returning from OPSA, on Sunday, I had the chance to attend the annual inspection of the Royal Canadian Air Cadets for the one-hundred-and-ninety-seventh Typhoon Squadron. And so, this is a group that's in the community that involves a lot of the students, both boys and girls, in the Acton community and beyond. And it's really a tribute to these young men and women who participate in many of the different events as members of the Royal Canadian Air Cadets. And I was very, very pleased to have that. I've, I've not had the chance to attend that before, and it was very engaging and actually quite emotional, as I saw the significance of participation in this particular group, what it meant to these young men and women. So, that was a wonderful thing to do. And finally, the last thing, I'm not sure if this has already been reported. I didn't see it in the minutes, but just a shout-out to Georgetown District High School teacher, Kyle Stewart, who received the McEwen Family Teacher Recognition Award from UBC. This award was given to him as he exemplifies the values and he, of the UBC, but also by investing his time and energy into ensuring his students succeed, not just academically, but personally. Coming with that award is about thirteen thousand dollars. And it's very interesting that UBC breaks it out with a couple of, two thousand dollars from Mr. Stewart's use towards his own professional development, but five thousand dollars to be used for school enrichment activities at Georgetown's District High School. Another thousand to be given to the person who nominated him, and a five thousand dollar entrance scholarship to a student at Georgetown who plans to attend UBC. So, wonderful news all the way around, a great, a great teacher in our system. And I had the pleasure of meeting him serendipusally. I went to the Terry Fox Relay for Life at Georgetown, and guess who's organizing the whole thing? There he is, Mr. Stewart. So, a shout-out to Kyle Stewart, and congratulations.
Trustee Reynolds.
I have a little bit of show and tell myself, my favorite part of the evening. So, our Board had eighty schools who successfully received parent-reaching-out grants. I believe the grant application for next year closed last year, and I'm, not last year, yesterday, actually. So, I'm, I'm excited to see how many of our schools successfully receive grants for the following year. The two Ward communities that I represent, Aldershot and Downtown Burlington, the, the Circle of Schools collaborated with their pro-grants. The Aldershot Community of Schools, that would be Aldershot, Maplehurst, Glenview, Kings Road, share their pro-grant and did a speaker series that they hosted at the school, including the Unlearn project. The Ward Two Schools of Burlington Central, Central Public, Lake Shore, and Thompson collaborated and on an event in which they had Olympian Adam Van Cumberden speak and a wellness expo. We had a, I want to say, a wrap-up meeting with both Ward's school communities, and we shared and compared what we learned through our pro-grants, what worked, what didn't. And I'm, I'm sure that informed their applications for next year. Just would like to thank, at that meeting, we, we hosted, we were delighted to host Superintendent Blackwell, who shared updates on the Aldershot iSTEM opportunity. I know that the school councils took that, this back to their schools, and heard that Superintendent Blackwell actually just had a visit to one of the schools to talk to the school council. Thank you also to Superintendent Pennyfather, who shared best-practice opportunities for school councils' constitutions, bylaws, and financials. Lots of good resources were shared. And thank you to Superintendent Trufan for providing an update on our Halton app.
Vice Chair Elle Harrison.
Thank you. Just briefly, through you, Madam Chair, I wanted to congratulate the Morden Drum Line, who we heard at the Student of Excellence Ceremony. They've recently competed in the provincials along with, or against largely a secondary school teams. So, you'll recall that they're an elementary school in southwest Oakville, and I think they're achieving another first in doing so. So, I wanted to congratulate the music team, the musicians, and all of the families that supported them through their journey this year. And then, over the next week or so, starting tonight, I think most of the schools in southwest Oakville, and probably in your areas as well, are having their fun fairs and whatever else they call them. So, I just wanted to thank the many, many volunteers that come together to put those events on, to bring families to our schools. Those volunteers do anything from managing busy households to managing multinational corporations, and they're bringing huge value to our system and upholding the values of, of the Board, and I think doing us proud and helping to raise positive profile. So, to one and all volunteers, thank you.
Trustee Amos.
I just wanted to mention about the Public Confidence Committee. And trustees had provided all kinds of wonderful ideas to the committees, and I'll let you know that those became a foundation of the last discussion and was categorized into different groups and were a starting point for part of the discussion of what was also provided by the Student Senate and some feedback we'd had from other people. And the work will continue in the fall. But I just wanted to let you know that a lot of good feedback was heard on some of the ideas that were shared to that document.
Okay, great. And I think we're at the end of the speakers list there. So, now we are, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Okay. Surprise. Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by? Trustee Amos. Is there any discussion at all on adjourning? Seeing none. So, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Awesome.[1384.41]